All right, you're on.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Gannaway.
Here.
Gibson. Kepler.
Here.
Here. Satterfield.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wendland.
Here.
All right, great. Can I get the approval of the minutes from last meeting, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, great. All right, the, welcome to the plan and zone meeting of January 18th. Plan and Zone Commission is a seven-member commission appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. The commission is recommending body only with the city council making the final decision. Regular meetings of the Plan and Zone Commission are held on the third Wednesday of each month at 5:30 in the City Hall, right here, chambers. Special meetings will be held as needed. We handle rezoning requests, preliminary and final plats, site development and landscape plans, and plan unit development plans. All right, with that, I'm gonna slip in a 2.5 on this, and welcome a new member that we have today, Corey Satterfield. Corey, you wanna maybe tell just a little bit about yourself?
So I'm a 18-year resident of the Bedendorf, and have a couple of degrees in architecture, have been practicing architecture and structural engineering for just shy of 30 years. Currently, Office Director at Shive Hattery. So, not here in that capacity, however.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, and welcome to the, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is a review and approval of the 2002 Plan and Zone Annual Report. Do, do we have any comments on that?
I can just give you a little bit of information.
Yep, sure.
The numbers, I'm sure you looked at the numbers yourself and the trends. It's one of those things where the trends don't always speak for themselves, where actually, if you just look at the number of cases, a little bit lower than our five-year average. But I, I believe if we added up the number of meeting hours, you would have met longer in that period than maybe the, maybe the four years prior. So, you know, why a case might be a case, each one is unique and requires different analysis and work from this, this commission and from staff, so. You know, a little below average, perhaps by the, by the raw numbers, but probably above average on the complexity.
Thank you, and I'd like to just mention that we appreciate everything that the city staff does here, the plan, the planning staff. Taylor, welcome to the club up here now, you've been up here quite a bit now. And everybody's done a good job, and yeah, some of those meetings did get a little long this year. I believe in my number of years, quite a few years, I think there were two meetings this year that were longer than any other ones over all those years, so. With that, any other comments, anybody has? Anybody online?
No, just echo what you said, Scott, that appreciate really much the effort the staff's put through. There were some difficult cases with a lot of things to discuss and resolve, and I think they've done a great job guiding both sides or all sides of the different cases through reasonable solutions, so we appreciate it.
Okay, with that, can I get a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Oh, second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Next on our agenda, election of officers. I think I was sitting in this chair last year when this came up too. Roy, should I do the same thing I did last year? Will that work for you?
If it's okay with you, it's okay with me.
All right, well, I'd like to nominate Roy to sit as the chair again for another year.
That's second.
Anyone else have any comments?
Thank you, Roy.
Happy to do it.
I, I would just say it's probably a lifetime of appointment, so go for it.
Wait a minute.
I'll second that, Lynn.
All right.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, Roy gets to sit in this chair when he's not in Florida for another year.
Okay.
All right, and with that, we've already reviewed the commission procedures. I think we'll hand it over to Taylor.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we have three cases on the agenda, two final plat, which are actually replats, and then one site development plan modification. The first presentation will be, we'll go over the, the two final plats that are actually replats. So this is FGAD Holdings, second and third edition. So this, if, has been very, has been brought to this commission many times, this site. These two plats are, have the same names as previous plats approved by this board. Just want to mention that these are new, slight, some slight modifications and some larger modifications. Applicant is Kevin Kellner, Focus Real Estate Development. The previously approved plats as mentioned were case 2258 and 2271. Shown on the map, the lot lines that are green are the proposed a new second edition, and then the orange lines are the proposed new third edition. The uses for the site include, this is the site of the golf, Iron T Golf Complex, the sports fields, commercial uses, commercial office, hotel, retail, lots of going on out there. This area is shown on the future land use map as community commercial. Zoning is C3. The previously approved, I'll go over the second edition first, this previously approved second edition from 2022, showed a total of five development lots and one outlot, so six lots. And this is, so this is north of Competition, the proposed Competition Drive, which actually is finished now, I believe. Clear that for ya. The new second edition, we'll call that the 2023 second edition, reconfigures and adds new lots, so we have a total of nine lots now. So these are eight development lots and one outlot. The additional lots that were added are mostly located adjacent to the golf complex. So, and we have one more right here. And I'll go into that further at, during the site development plan review. There was some reconfiguration and allotment of parking and size of the total development, which allowed for the reconfiguration of this plat to allow for more development lots. The third edition is located south of Competition Drive, so this is the island I like to call it. The only, the, the third edition was, the 2022 version was approved last year. The only change from the previously approved version and the newly submitted version is the inclusion of Lot 5, which is the site of McDonald's. You'll see on the previously approved one, that actually was located in the FGAD Holdings first edition, is now located within the proposed third edition, so we have all the lots on one plat. Virtually, there's no other changes to lot lines, there was a small sewer easement that has been vacated. But you can see there's very little changes from the two third editions. So, not going into the detail of the changes to the site plan yet, the staff contends all the submitted plats meet city code, subdivision ordinance, zoning code, and recommends the following: approval of the final plat for FGAD Holdings second edition, so case number 23-003, and approval of the final plat of FGAD Holdings third edition, case 23-004. I can take any questions.
All right. All right, we don't have any questions here unless Ann or Lynn or Roy, do you have any questions?
No questions per se, but I did like, Taylor, the way you were able to toggle between the different alternatives, because it got a little confusing trying to reference back and forth, and with you being able to lay over and toggle back and forth, that was pretty slick, so. Yeah, I like that, that, that's a nice, nice way to show that before and propose, so thank you for that.
Okay, anyone in the audience care to comment? Okay. Then we need a motion.
I move to approve case number 23-003, subject to staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second. Any additional comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries.
I approve to, or I move to approve case 23-004, subject to staff recommendation.
I'll second that one as well.
Great. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those, all those opposed, same sign? Motion carries? All right.
Thank you, Chairman. So case 23-005, this is the proposed golf venue and sports multi, multi-sport field. This is located on lots three and four of the just recommended for approval second edition. This is, we're calling this a site development plan modification because a previous site plan was already approved by this body and by the city council. Shown here on the map, this is just three and four, so the lots are outlined in blue. This is all that's being reviewed here tonight. The other lots are either have approved site plans with them, already approved, or will have future development on them. As mentioned, this is community commercial, future land use, and it's located in the C3 zoning district. The original 2022 site development plan showed the golf venue located to the east on a previously named lot, Lot 1, and the ball fields to the northeast, and then the parking was shown in a large area to the south. The use, the identified uses were golf, per our zoning ordinance, are commercial, recreation, high impact. Both of those uses actually required a special use permit in this C3 district, and those were approved by the Board of Adjustment. All other uses that are included in the golf complex, such as arcades, restaurants, bars, are permitted uses in the C3 district. The new 2023 site development plan, all uses remain the same. Some of the cha, the changes that are, have been proposed are, include, the total square footage of the golf venue has been shrunk by roughly 14%, so I think it went from 71,000 square feet to 62,000 square feet, roughly. The size of the concession stand, which is located in the center of the ball fields, has been reduced by 45%, so it's much smaller. The parking locations have been reconfigured, so now we have parking not all down here, but they've kind of segregated the parking, so we have parking located by the ball fields, adjacent to the ball fields and the golf venue, which should result in, when we have, the vet, when there's events going at the same time, the, the first come parking, the parking nearest the walkways won't get occupied by one user or the other, or customer. And then, lastly, the number, the amount of parking, so the parking allotment has been lowered quite significantly percentage-wise by 27%, so we're talking 325 spaces, and I'll go into that on an upcoming slide. This shows, this overall site plan, concept plan, kind of shows how this fits in with, there's buildings, some buildings are just future concepts, some are actually, have been approved, as mentioned, by previous site development plans, but the overall concept for the site, you can see how the thoroughfare access works. This also, it's, I know it's a large image, but if you zoom in, you can see the pedestrian access, which remains the similar, just reconfigured as it was on the previous site plan. Their, the access to Competition Drive remains the same, you have three accesses from the north, here, here, and here. And then you'll also have the driveline that's, which will provide access to these interior lots. And this driveline at, is being named Iron T Way on the, just so we will be addressing these lots off of that for easier identification. The parking changes, the original park, the original 2022 site development plan provided 1,186 off-street parking spaces, those are shaded in yellow on the display. This, this did not technically meet what our code specifies for off-street parking requirements. We do have a specified use for high-impact commercial recreation, and that actually for driving ranges, but given the fact that this also includes arcades, bar, bars, restaurants, and the overall, the size and the, the adjacent developments that surround this, staff contended and the board agreed that it, the zoning code just doesn't adequately address this type of development because of the mixture of uses, location, and scale. So the Board of Adjustment granted a parking exception, not a variance, but exception, to the off-street parking code or calculations, providing that the applicant bring forward their calculations. Previously, they used calculations which were similar to the TBK development on the west side of Middle Road, so that includes the indoor turf field, the bowling lanes, the present, the existing field. This development is a little different because we have the, we'll call it like a Topgolf-like venue, and then the sports field, so it's not a true comparable development. They went back to, and looked at some of the other existing golf venues around the Midwest and realized there's a lot of extra parking located in this look, at this location. Thus, they reconfigured the nut, the allotment of parking and lowered that to 861 off-street parking spaces shown on the newly submitted site plan, so those are shown in yellow. They also added those lots which were shown in the previous plats, and they built in the ability to share parking on these purple shaded lots. So you'll have a shared parking number, rough, staff contends 10% would be sufficient, but there'd probably be more on any developments located on these purple lots. And then to give a little background on what was submitted from the applicant, and they looked at the, some of the comps from other developments. So you have like Topgolf in Naperville, which has actually more bay, golf bays, so we're looking at number of Ts as an amenity, and then square footage is roughly the same, and they have 421 spots. Schaumburg, 517 parking spaces, 102 bays, roughly the same square footage. Sioux Falls, South Dakota, 336. Kansas City has 313, and then that's where they came up with the number, and we're still at over 860, it's 861, I believe, spots. I think that's a typo. So we're well above that, and then that's not including the option, well, the, the staff will make a recommendation for a condition for shared parking on these lots. So staff feels that, given the configuration and the ability to share parking in these lots, that the parking calculations submitted are sufficient and provide for more development at the, at the site and not giant parking lots. The landscape plan, the original landscape plan is shown. The original plan showed 73 tree factors, which, and that met the requirement. A new, a new really reconfigured landscape plan has not been submitted yet, there needs to be some changes done, so staff wants, will require a review of that prior to city council approval. But being that the square footage of the, square footage has shrunk, the parking is, the interior parking has changed a little bit, there will be a similar design, and then you'll have some of these lots that will be located here, will have their own site development plans attached to them, and their landscape plans would be separate. So we will have, make that a requirement prior to city council approval, but we do not have that right now. With that, staff is recommending approval of the site development plan modification for the golf venue and sports fields located on proposed lots three and four of the FGAD Holdings second edition. So it's case number 23-005, with the following conditions, that future developments on lots two, six, and seven of the second edition shall provide sufficient amount of off-street parking to allow for a 10% shared parking between the proposed developments on lots three and four. And also, an updated landscape plan be submitted and reviewed by staff prior to approval by city council. I can take any questions.
Thank you, Taylor. Any questions?
So, I think parking sounds reasonable, but I have a question that I just am curious about for future conversations. How is it determined whether an exception is required or a variance is required?
So, per our code, the board has a few different powers, Board of Adjustment, that is. A variance would ask for a specific number reduction, given, say, there's a setback, or if there's a typical, we had a number, 25 parking spaces required, but we have 20. In this case, we don't have a calculation that can even adequately calculate that number. This development is just so unique that the exception is given to basically trust the number, the calculations that the applicant is given, given their research and their consultants have done. So that's basically the difference in exception versus a variance, yeah.
And if I, I could also add is that the, the code does specifically in delineating the, the powers of the Board of Adjustment, it does separate those, and one of the things in the exception is that you can waiver, reduce the parking and loading requirements in, in these districts. And I think that Taylor and team have done a great job of showing the unique nature of, of this particular area and the uses in this area, and so it's consistent with the code. I think it makes sense, and then additionally, there are certain legal requirements for a variance, the, the unnecessary hardship rules that, that apply to a variance that don't apply here, but the code contemplates this distinction, and I think it, it makes good sense here.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep.
I could just add to that too, we, we also think that the Board of Adjustment's ruling, the spirit of that, the intent of that, is still met with the proposed changes, and probably, this probably actually works better, just from a, from a movement of interior traffic, so probably reduces some parking anyway that you would need, just because people are gonna be able to park, and you're the part of the facility they want to be at, it's such a large facility with so many uses.
And I, I think the distinction between the original calculation provided for the 2022 site plan was the, was the, the experience or the development to the west, the current TBK. They, they used calculations based off of that, and then the new calculations, as shown, were given more of specified comps on other developments around the Midwest. So that's, I think, a more specified distinction and.
Yeah, I appreciate that extra research, I think that's really helpful.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question from online.
Go ahead, Roy.
So, just so I'm, I'm clear, there's, there's gonna be shared parking of approximately 10% on those areas that there could be up to 10% or 10% shared use. Will there also be other development, or that's only parking?
Nope, those, that's proposed future development, so I think you can see on this is the overall concept plan, you can see the building outlines.
Buildings, yep.
So that's roughly the, the proposed size of those buildings, and then the parking associated with them.
So just a directional question then on that, Taylor, so if, for example, it's a, I'll make it up, a 5,000-square-foot building of, of a restaurant use, and it requires 50 spaces, let's say, will we then require 55 so that it can be shared? Or if he has 5,000 square feet, it requires 50, 10% or five of those, now really there's only 45 potentially that could be used by the restaurant that would normally require 50, how will that work?
Well, as a typical site development plan review, and we look at the uses, and our shared parking is outlined in code, so those uses can be shared if, say, they're off, you know, if they're all in the same hours, that's not gonna work for shared parking, but if, say, if one of these buildings is a financial service with daytime hours and are peak times for the golf venue or at night, that's more typical of a shared use there.
Okay.
And it really depends on the uses, and that's, that's why we're stating this now, so applicant when planning for and designing these lots, or lot, these developments on these lots has that condition in mind.
Okay, makes sense, thank you.
Taylor, can I add to that? Roy, another thing that we've discussed is the shared parking is only gonna be working one direction. So, we cannot, or we will not consider any of those future developments if they are short parking to be able to say that they are sharing parking from TBK to make up for theirs. It only really flows in one direction.
So you can't.
Okay, good point.
You can't underpark the purple. Purple will be.
All right, good.
And possibly plus parked, depending on the user and the hours of parking use.
Okay, great, thank you for the clarification.
Ann or Lynn, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I do have, I do have a question, Scott.
Okay.
This is Dan. I've heard the word "unique" used several times in talking about this project, and it is very unique, and I think what makes the east side of the road, of Middle Road, unique is the, the mix of uses. So you have a sports complex, and then you have the golf complex, and then you have the retail, restaurant, whatever else goes in those buildings. Having spent a fair amount of time at the existing TBK complex and seeing the number of people that use that all at one time for sporting, and it doesn't seem to matter what time of the day it is, I mean, I've been there at 9:30 at night, 10 o'clock at night, looking for a parking spot because there's a lot of activity out there. I just wonder if, as the analysis took place, it was ever segmented so that you look, the, the decision was, how much parking does the sports complex need? How much parking does the golf complex need? And it was done separately and then looked at as the aggregate total.
So originally, the, the parking, and I summarize this, the staff report and the site plan do delineate the, or separate those parking counts, but they did use different calculations. They're still in the same parking lot, though, and, and the first site plan. The second submission, or the, that we're being underreviewed tonight, has, they've done the same thing, but they've also separated kind of the locations of those, so. I think, is that kind of what you're asking?
I think the question, and I, and I, I'm pretty sure you did this, because we talked about it. It's imagine if you had a standalone arcade, a standalone bar, a standalone driving range, a standalone baseball diamond, and you took all those parking numbers together, and we were getting, and I'm not gonna quote a number, but we were getting a parking complex that was, you know,
Yeah.
obtuse, when we were doing that, you know, 2, 3,000 spaces or something beyond what we thought was even necessary. We're talking thousands of spaces beyond what we thought necessary, I don't have the, that math in front of me. I did talk to Taylor about that when he did it. You know, that's when we said, hey, we gotta look at a parking exception, otherwise we're gonna build, we're gonna build concrete flat space, which is not, was not our goal, but Ann, I don't have that number in front of me, but how that penciled out, but it did take place.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the sports fields had a number associated with it, and it was based off of the number of players that could be at one field at a time, and then they approximated how many players for, per vehicle, but then you're looking at the age of the players involved, it got kind of complex in that regard. And that was the, from the original calculations, so borrowing that into the present calculation, I assume that stayed the same, roughly, it was the, it was really the golf venue that changed the most. And as you can see from the other comps, that they're mostly just golf venues, I believe. So that's unique in itself that we're combining a sports field, sports complex, and a golf complex, which have kind of separate users. But the original, the original parking plan, which is shown here, did separate those out. And there's, I should mention, there's also, these will be connected. I mean, it is future, the future plan to have these connected by a pedestrian bridge, and that can play into the calculation as well. There will be, and Brent helped me, but somewhere right here, right there. So ideally, if you have, say, a tournament going on, you could have players and families going back and forth while the car remains in the same place. So there's a lot of variables to consider there as well.
And I do remember, I do remember Brent explaining to us that the city had applied for funding for that pedestrian bridge, but also committed to building it regardless of whether the funding came through. How did, how does that construction line up with the completion of this project?
Yeah, so Anne, unfortunately, the, the grant funding did not come through, but the city has committed to it, we're gonna fund it locally. It's in our draft capital budget that will be approved early March, but the bonding has already basically been laid out, so it, it is gonna get built. The plan is to start design here, you know, in the next month or two. That'll take the majority of the calendar year, and then we would start, go out for bid early twenty-four, be completed probably June, July of twenty-twenty-five. So we'll be a little behind them on terms of their opening. But with all the roadwork that we've got still going on, and then the IAD and Middle Road interchange as well, that's just, unfortunately, it's the only way we can fit it.
But it does sound like, timing-wise, it's, there's not a huge gap.
No, there, there really won't be, and it'll, it'll be built before the majority of the complex is fully developed.
Great, okay, that's good news.
Okay, anybody in the audience would like to speak?
I normally wouldn't do this, but since I'm first on the agenda, I thought I'd better say a few things.
And last.
And thank you, thank you, Scott. I still have to talk to Roy about this, but I'm thankful you're leading this tonight, putting me first.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to, I guess, relay some of the thoughts that we had on our end and, and the reason we're back here. So, with what's on the screen right now, one of the, one of the really big benefits of the new design is that we were able to more deliberately park the baseball versus the golf. In the first scenario, everyone was parking in an area, and it, it's not as convenient to just the baseball person or just the golf person. It, it was a little bit, again, first come, first served, as somebody brought up. So, we feel like we have a much better situation to serve the customers of both the golf and the baseball. So that, that was a big improvement. We did downsize the facility itself and got rid of some square footage that wasn't productive. We also downsized some of the seating after studying more of the other venues. And then we just looked at their overall parking, as Brent and Taylor both explained. And so, we, that, that has us feeling very comfortable. We did, to Anne's question, separately analyze the parking count versus the golf count and to arrive at these figures. And then lastly, with staff meeting a week or two ago, we all agree that shared parking with the other development makes a lot of sense. And then, just as a, another backup to that, as developers, we're partners in the golf and baseball, as is TBK a partner in that, and it's in all of our best interest to park this correctly. So, as another fallback, even though it's not in purple, to the north and east, if we have to add parking specific or incorporate more purple, if you were, if you will, where we're sharing it, we'll do that, so.
Thanks, Kevin, I'm glad you mentioned that, the, the build it and they will come. If you don't put enough parking spots, that, that last lot that you might want to put a building on might not turn up.
Yeah.
Hey, now, I, I, it's Roy, I just, I just can't let it go, Kevin, because you are first on the agenda, but if you look, you're also last, you are the.
Yeah, that was brought up to Lisa.
Yep, and usually when you're last and wait a long time, you know, my wife makes cookies, so.
Right, anyone else? Okay. All right, do we, can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve case two-three dash zero zero five, subject to staff recommendations.
Roy'll second that.
Great, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, and then we have a case that's deferred, so on to commission updates.
No update today. Carrying along, a little bit of downtime for us right now, so.
Okay, great. Meeting adjourned.